Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council Work Session for June 27. Welcome to everyone here and everyone at home. If you look at our agenda, we start out with items and committee reports, and we were going to revisit our process session discussion on the pledge. And I wanted to wait for Alan to get here, so I guess what I'll do is give him five, and we'll start around and see if other people have other items of interest that they want to do for five minutes, and we'll hope to catch up and get going then. So, let's see how that works for us. So, Betty, you have anything for items of interest?
A couple of things.
Okay, go right ahead.
Three things. Actually, the KLCC garden tour yesterday was really wonderful, and part of it was the mayor's garden, which was like a great place to retreat and relax after a council meeting. I attended the workforce partnership board meeting, which was, a lot of it was involved, a lot of it involved getting a balanced budget, and that's something we've never heard of, of course. But people are doing good work there still. And then I sent out an intended motion, this came out to you some time ago, and this is about the dog, the law that says dogs can't be on 13th and Alder. This was passed about 1996. And I think Pat's the only person here who was on the council at that time. But I wasn't on the council, but I attended all the hearings, and I remember that some of the big objections were from female professors at the university who used their offices at night and wanted to take their dogs with them for protection, and wouldn't be able to walk home along Alder or 13th. And there were other women who visit people in that area who wanted to be able to take their dogs when it was after dark. So I think it's a law that was a mistake in the first place, and certainly, most people don't even know it's there now. But my motion is to direct the city manager to prepare and schedule a public hearing on an ordinance repealing section 4.427 of the Eugene Code concerning dogs in the area of Alder and 13th Streets.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Pat?
I'd like to move that we table the motion to a date certain, second meeting in July.
You're a second.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
You can't, you can't debate the table.
Oh, that's right.
Although Pat said table it to a date certain, that really makes it a motion to postpone to a date certain.
Thank you.
Which is debatable.
Okay.
I'd second that.
All right. All right.
I thought so.
So further discussion?
Well, just as a point of process, I'd rather not take that motion up in items from the mayor and city council. I'd rather do it in a regular work session where it has been perhaps announced that we're going to be discussing it.
If I may respond?
Let me?
We're taking up two other motions of this work session. I don't see why this one's any different.
Betty?
You did know about this advance that was sent out some weeks ago, and I asked Glenn Clong when was a good time to do it, and he said that under items would be acceptable. That's just why, and it was sent out to everybody at least two weeks ago, I think more than that.
Mike?
I certainly understand my friend Pat's desire to make sure that we do things in a deliberative way, but all this motion does is move this forward to a public hearing for discussion, and I'm okay with that.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Okay. And I think the second agrees with that, so we're okay with that. All right. Chris, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, that's fine.
All right. You ready to vote on this? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. None in opposition. It passes. Thank you. So we'll move that forward. And I guess we're just going to start. So, Mike?
I don't need to go through all this again. We had a pretty good discussion of it the other day. The only thing I'll say is before I read the motion is, based on information that I got from the mayor and based on information that I got in an email exchange with councilors in Lenka, I'm going to drop the last sentence of this motion because it is the mayor's purview to make that decision.
Thank you.
With the State of the City address, and I'm interested in compromising one last time to find something that we can get to a majority on here so that we can move on past this. So, I move the Eugene City Council begin their formal council meetings with the voluntary recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance at those council meetings closest to the following holidays: Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Flag Day, and the Fourth of July.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded, yes.
This is, this is something, as I mentioned the other day, that I wanted to do at every formal council meeting. I wanted to do it at all council meetings, frankly, but was willing to back off to something a little more reasonable and perhaps just do it the formal ones. But I understood the level of discussion was such that many councilors, I questioned whether or not we could get to a majority on doing that, and it's my interest to try and bring as many people to this at the council table as possible that can find some way to agree. This is a good first step for me, so I'm willing to go this far and compromise on what was, in the first place, an idea that I thought was frankly a reasonable one. I wouldn't want to go farther than this. I know that Councilor Zelenka put forward today earlier this other idea that has some other pieces to it. I understand and appreciate his point of view, and I can understand what he's trying to create there, but for me, it's that, I've already tried to compromise and find some middle ground here with this particular version as opposed to my original intent, and I'm challenged to go so much farther in what he's put forward, so I hope you can support this motion.
And for your information, Alan, he's removed the last sentence from his motion.
Out of respect to your note and the mayor's concerns.
Okay. So I've got Pat, and then Andrea, and then George Brown, and then Chris.
I'd like to make a motion amend that the, it read, after the Pledge of Allegiance to be recited at all regular council meetings as defined by the city charter.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. I don't see any other, yes?
I second it because it was my original intent, and I'm willing to have the discussion if other people want to talk about that, and that's why I'd second it. But I don't believe it'll pass a vote at the table, and thus, that's why I was willing to put forward this position that I thought could.
All right. Don't see anybody wanting to discuss this one?
If it fails, I do have the Second Amendment.
Did you want to speak on this one? No? All right. So we're going to vote on this one. All those in favor, Pat's motion, please indicate. Three in favor, all those in opposition. One, two, three, four, five in opposition. It does not pass. Next motion?
The motion to amend that after the pledge of allegiance was set at the opening of the annual State of the City event, add a sentence and that the US flag and Oregon state flag be displayed at all city council meetings containing more than a quorum of city councilers as defined by the city charter.
Process question?
Yes.
I question, I guess it would be the city attorney, I took the mayor's word for it and Councilor Zelenka's word for it, that we didn't have the authority to do that because the State of the City address was the purview of the mayor, the agenda for the State of the City address was the purview of the mayor, which is why I struck that line. I would like to see that included as well, but again, I was taking their word for it that we're not able to do that, so I asked the city attorney to clarify that.
Then it would be the purview of the mayor to remove the city, the flag.
Do you want to speak to that, Glenn?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'd need to get back to you.
Okay.
Well, I can just speak from experience, and I've been told ever since I became mayor that the agenda and all the arrangements around the State of the City were within my responsibility.
Then let's add with the exception of the State of the City address.
So we're just putting the flags up?
Putting the flags up in the McNutt Room when we have a council meeting, basically.
Okay. When I want to speak to this, is there a second?
So, could you repeat what you said? What you're?
An additional sentence, and that the US flag and flag of the state of Oregon be displayed at all council meetings containing a quorum of city councilors with the exception of the State of the City address, which is the purview of the mayor.
Moved and seconded. So now I have in the queue on this one, I have George Brown, and then I have Chris. George?
I have a question for Councilor Farrar. So does this mean if we don't have a quorum, the flags would be removed from the room?
Well, there wouldn't be a voting meeting at that point, so I guess that would be the, if the flags were here, I don't see any sense in removing them, but if a quorum were anticipated.
I'm just following what you said.
If a quorum were anticipated, or if there were meeting other than in the McNutt Room that contained a quorum of the city council.
So you're talking about the work session and?
I'm thinking the discussion is getting more bizarre as we go.
We're not going to debate, we're not going to debate, Pat.
We're getting away from council process to ceremonial minutia. It's kind of a waste of our time, personally.
Chris, you're next.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand. So, at any meeting of the council where there's a quorum, so for example, if a transportation committee was meeting over in the atrium building, and there was a quorum of the council at that committee meeting, we'd have to display a flag?
If it were a voting meeting of the city council, which would be indicated by a quorum.
Okay, so a voting meeting of the council?
We can have that word, yeah.
Do we have such a thing?
What I'm doing is I'm just looking for clarification. It's got some ambiguity into it, and I don't, I'm just not, I understand where you're trying to go. And if, where you were going was, let's put an American flag in the McNutt Room, I'm all for that, but it's tying it to voting or not voting or quorums or whatever, for me, it's, I would need more time to think about it.
My intention is that whenever there's a voting meeting of the city council, which would include the McNutt Room, or for instance, the Camel Center, or wherever else, or Peterson Barn, or wherever else we may meet as a city council.
Like the public library?
Or the library, if we were meeting as a council.
That's reasonable.
Okay. Glenn, did you have something you wanted to say about that?
Anytime the council is meeting as the city council, it would be, in my opinion, a voting meeting because you would have the authority to vote. So whether it's in the library, whether it's in the Springfield Library, because your meeting is part of a JEO meeting, you have, you open the city council meeting, mayor, I believe, at all of those, you have the authority to vote at those, even if it's not on the agenda. So, the answer to your question, Chris, is all meetings of the city council would be subject to this motion unless you defined it differently.
With that interpretation, attorney, I would.
Pat, are you in the queue?
I'm.
Restating the motion.
Are you restating the motion?
I restated the motion, yeah. But when the city council meets in the McNutt Room, the US flag and, flag of the state of Oregon be displayed.
Moved and seconded? Okay. All right. I've got, Chris, are you finished? I'm sorry.
I'm done.
All right. Anybody else want to speak on this one? Alan?
Well, this is, to add that particular sentence to this particular motion, which I think is going to fail, I don't think it's a bad idea to have a flag in here, but I'm going to vote against this particular motion.
Okay, so now you're ready to vote, yes, on this amendment?
In the queue as well.
I'd like to be in the queue for once the amendment's disposed of.
Before you, before we vote?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to say before the minute, I just, I heard Alan's comment there, and I wanted to understand that more, and certainly, it's his discretion to do so. Whether or not, he'd be interested in helping me understand that. But my compromise motion was largely due to your suggestion, and so I'm wondering why we would. Is it this amendment portion that would make you want to vote no on the compromise motion, then? I guess would be my question.
Alan?
Well, I have my own motion, which is, which is the one I would like to see passed, and it can be modified as well. So, I want to see this one passed, so I'm not going to vote in favor of this one. And I think the difference between the two is the intent behind what I was trying to get at last meeting, which is that instead of doing it at every meeting that we have it be a celebration, where we celebrate the flag and the Pledge of Allegiance by inviting different entities to do this with us, whether it be the Boy Scouts, or the.
Girl Scouts.
Or the Girl Scouts, or the, or, you know, the veterans of foreign wars, or Calc, or whoever do we bring in to help us do this, then it becomes more of a celebration of the event and of the flag and of our country. And I think that's what I was trying to get at, to make it be special.
So before we get to yours, we need to vote on this amendment?
That's the difference between the two.
Thanks.
Okay. So all those in favor of Pat's amendment? One, two, three, in opposition? One, two, three, four, five, so it goes down. So now you're back to the main motion, and I have Andrea in the queue.
Thank you, mayor. So, I'm going to speak to both motions, since I like to think that we can get to a compromise here. I do appreciate Councilor Clark's position on trying to meet us halfway. I will support the first part of the motion, definitely. What I would like to see added to this, and Alan, I don't know.
Will you have a friendly?
I will. And Alan, I don't, I don't really want to change the part, you know, where you say it shall occur between 7:00 and 7:30 in the council chambers. If anything, I would like to continue having the meeting start at 7:30, but then have the ability to let people sign up later after we start, because in that way, if there are people who have religious objections to participating in the four times a year that we move the, that we move the time that people sign up, like 10 minutes or whatever, I would leave that to the city manager's discretion. And I really do like the idea of having, having a group of people come and participate with us. I would love to see a group of Girl Scouts, women of the Vietnam War, I mean, retired police officers, and, you know, I would really like to have it be an event that would bring us together more and encourage participation from those groups. So I would like to see the motion, and I, and you can be, you guys are the motion makers, but I would like to see that not the mayor shall.
I would accept a friendly that, that would say to include so, the participation of a variety of.
A group of groups.
To include the participation of group, of a group or groups in the process of that celebration with these, with my original.
So my thought would be that the mayor may invite a group or groups to participate in these ceremonies, not shall, because that way, if, if there are not people who, if we can't, for whatever reason garner a group of people, that it isn't, become obstructive. So that's what I would have.
I will accept that friendly.
So it's the mayor may invite a group or groups to participate in the ceremony.
George Brown?
Well, the second needs to accept it as well.
I'll accept.
Okay. Sorry, thank you for that.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate Councilor Zelenka's attempts to modify what I believe is a terrible idea to begin with. It really hasn't united us. That was the original idea, as expressed by Councilor Clark. I think it's been very divisive. I think we can see that from the emails that we've received, and the letters to the editor. The original rationale, as I recall, was somehow this would, saying the Pledge of Allegiance would unite the city council somehow. Then the rationale changed in the process session, and we learned that supposedly Eugene celebrates, likes to celebrate weird things, like the Eugene Celebration, which I just thought was a party for all of Eugene. Then we've learned that there are people that don't like to celebrate weird things. None of these people have ever come before us at a public forum, or spoken before the council, or sent us emails saying, we don't like the weird things that Eugene likes, we want to have something that we like, that we can participate in. So somehow, this will satisfy their needs. But I don't understand the rationale. I think it's, I think it's fairly fantastic. We've got to keep in mind, you know, there's some people in New Orleans that don't like Mardi Gras, believe it or not. So, I, just this whole notion that we need something for people, the non-weird people, is very strange to me, and I, for the life of me, I can't see how this is going to make our council meetings run better, which I thought that was the whole rationale for having There is one positive thing, though. I am encouraged by the fact that Councilor Clark has finally accepted an idea of a socialist. Francis Bellamy was a socialist.
Yes.
And perhaps, perhaps Councilor Farrar will be moved to accept other socialist ideas in the future, like single payer.
Unhealthcare.
Universal healthcare.
You like soccer, too.
So, that, I suppose, is one positive point of this little very strange conversation, which I feel is taking us away from city business, which is, we take an oath to, you know, work on the problems of all of Eugene, and I really don't see how this is going to help us do that. Thank you.
Chris, you're next.
However, I.
No. Okay. Alan?
Couple of, I like the suggestion, and I was assuming you were also including the time to sign up part?
Yeah, well, I was.
Part of the understanding as a part of the motion.
As a city manager, I don't know that it needs to be in the motion.
But I just wanted to make sure that gets, yeah.
That's legislative time.
Right. Because for people who are probably confused about this, our meetings are, the time to sign up is five minutes past the gavel, and if we're going to take 15, 20 minutes, then it would be five minutes past that or so. So, so I like that idea. The difference between the mentions now, and I can accept doing it at the beginning of the meeting, is that the original thought behind this is to celebrate our country and celebrate the flag, and I kept thinking about Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and Flag Day being an appropriate time to do the Pledge of Allegiance, but this wasn't about the Pledge of Allegiance, it was about the United States of America and celebrating that. And on the Fourth of July, it seemed particularly, a little odd to me to be doing the Pledge of Allegiance when that was about the Declaration of Independence, and about the birth of our country and celebration of that and our Constitution. So my idea was, instead of on the meeting closest to the Fourth of July, instead of doing the Pledge of Allegiance, that we, that we celebrate another very, very important, maybe more, much more important document, which is the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, by either reading, having a reading from the Declaration of Independence or part of the Constitution, and how that'd be part of the celebration as opposed to the Pledge of Allegiance. So, if, on the Fourth of July, I'm wondering if it would be acceptable to the makers of the motion and the second to, on the Fourth of July, to make that be part of the ceremony as opposed to just the Pledge of Allegiance.
So you're saying doing both would be okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, but I think it gets too long, meaning, that part of the meeting is very long, because the, if you read the Constitution, or part of the Constitution or the Declaration of Independence, it would be, it would be several minutes long.
Was that a question of the maker?
Yeah, if you'd accept it as a friendly.
I will say that this, I've really, really, this has gone quite a far astray from my original proposal, and I mentioned several things that I was willing to compromise on, and I just did it again after I said I probably wouldn't. Andrea, and I absolutely value what you're saying, but your rationale that you put forward first about why it was put forward doesn't match up with mine. I value the things that you said, but it's not why I put the motion out in the first place, so it doesn't really correlate for me. I think that that's something we may be able to add informally over, over the course of time, and I'd be willing to, but I don't want to add it to the motion, if that's okay.
Okay. I'd like to see that happen, so I'll move to amend that on a council meeting closest to the Fourth of July holiday, the ceremony shall include readings from the Declaration of Independence and/or the US Constitution. It should say, instead, include the readings, sorry.
Second?
Are you saying instead of the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah, on that particular day.
It's kind of vague. Second, we choose?
Moved and seconded.
Yes.
Do you want to say something?
I would say that.
Well, it could be both.
I, well.
Say both.
Okay, well, I'll clarify. That we do, that we do both.
And I just got to understand that I'd be willing to look at that when we do it, but not to make it as part of the motion, and my reasoning, again, was because what you just said was that it was to celebrate our country, and that's not the reason I brought it forward, although that's certainly a valid and good thing for us to do. The reason I brought it forward was because of something, and I'd answer my friend George, I suppose, by saying that there is a segment of our community, and a very large one, at least from my perspective, that feels as though their values, that saying the Pledge of Allegiance to them seems like a very normal and healthy and wonderful thing to do, for their city council to do. And something that they value in that way is often met with hostility, and it leaves them feeling apart. Now, I agree with you that in, in New Orleans, there are several people who probably don't like Mardi Gras very much, but when they live there, they need to tolerate that. And what I was saying was, for example, I have some challenges when I had, when my kids were quite a bit younger going to the Eugene Celebration Parade, because there were certain entries in there that I didn't really want to explain to them when they were three and four years old, and I found that offensive, that I didn't have that choice. And I get to tolerate that because that's the community we live in, and tolerating those differences is an important part of the community we live in. There are a great many people in our community that want to say, want to see their council have the respect for their values in this way, to simply say the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of their meetings. And I'm simply saying that, for me, yes, over time, different from its original intent, has become an issue of tolerance to a certain degree, and I'm simply asking if those with a different set of values can have a seat at the table, too.
Is it, I fell for? Oop, I did for a minute, four.
Gone now. I, I guess what I just want to say, Betty in the queue next, and George, I'll put you back in, Alan, if you'd like to be back in. And I'm going to point out, we got, it's five till six, and we have other things on our agenda. If the intention of this is to find something that we can agree on, then the more statements that are made about different parts of the community, the less likely that is to occur. So I just hope that we will work hard on finding a positive way to support the different points of view around the table and come out with something that doesn't denigrate anybody's views and anybody's position around the table. So, with that, Betty.
First, we're wasting time talking about this. We were elected to do the city's business, and the Pledge of Allegiance is not a part of that, and a big discussion about it and about who's right and who's wrong is not a big, is not a part of that. If we have to do something to satisfy everyone, should we read the Commissar's manifesto? Should we, there are lots of other things that probably some people would like to have us read or say. I could see the Declaration of Independence on, at the Fourth of July, that would, a lot of people don't even know what it says. They do know what the Pledge of Allegiance says, but if, we might be helping to educate people, but the newspaper does print it, I think. The Register Guide prints it, and if we wanted to say something, we could say that. But I think this is just a big waste of time, and I think we should be doing the city's business. The more recent editorial by the Register Guide said it pretty well, I think. They changed their minds and said we should forget about the pledge, which is what I think we should do as a, as a city council. This is not our business. Thank you.
George?
Well, I just have one more comment, I guess. I, you know, we, we keep hearing about these people that think that, you know, it's so important that we, for the city council to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm just wondering why we've only heard about them from, in them secondhand, from Councilor Clark. Why haven't we heard from them via email, or showing up at public meetings, or, you know, telling us of their big concerns, like this would be a way for them to connect with the larger community, perhaps? I don't know. It just seems like a really poor way to craft public policy, to me, by rumor and innuendo and secondhand, uncorroborated statements. I really think it's a really poor way for the council to do business. Thank you.
Alan?
Just wanted to clarify what the amendment is. It's, it's, instead, instead of the word instead, it should say also, so it's a.
Read the whole thing over, can we?
On the council meeting closest to the Fourth of July holiday, the ceremony shall also include readings from the Declaration of Independence and/or the US Constitution.
I'll accept that as a friendly under the circumstances that it's also.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So then, you're withdrawing that, and it's in your motion, and we're ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those in opposition, two, it passes. Thank you. And now we'll go on with the business of the evening, and that is ward redistricting.
So we can get any items and committee reports tonight, mayor?
We use up all the time.
But can I just say one shout out?
Yep, yep.
I just wanted to acknowledge Wayne Watkins. He is tonight at the Beppel School Board. He is retiring after over 30 years of service as one of the longest standing school board members in the state of Oregon. And Pat and I would both be there if it were not for our responsibilities here.
So let's say we all thank Wade for his service.
It's a shasta, but I went to Kalapua.
Sorry?
I was a shasta, but I went to Kalapua on the way here.
Okay.[1790.13] Okay. Thank you for that, and now, we're gonna talk about ward redistricting. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just turn over to Kelly.
Thank you for having us back to talk about ward redistricting. Jason Dedrick from Planning is joining me this evening, and we'll make some introductory remarks about where we are tonight in terms of providing support as you discuss criteria. Just a reminder, we were last here meeting with council in April, and you provided direction about a timeline and process. We have sunset time, put information out into the community, met with a number of councillors one-on-one, met with different organizations in the community, held a work session, or an open house, and gone out and gotten in. But tonight's work session is to talk about criteria that would guide the development of ward boundary scenarios, and what we hope to leave tonight's work session with is that direction from you. And Jason has some additional information to share.
Thanks. So, talk a bit about what we've been up to over the last month or so. Essentially, we've been out in the community getting feedback on the potential criteria to utilize when considering ward boundaries. We've met or spoken with many of you. We've also attended meetings of some key stakeholder groups in the community that have expressed interest in this issue, either this year or in the past. We also have made attempts to contact the general public through press releases. We've done a couple of radio interviews. We also had an open house on June ninth, where people could come in, look at maps, take the survey online. We also, for quite a while now, at least over a month, have had a survey up on our website, on the redistricting page, where people can take the survey online, and the results of that survey are in your packet. We've had about, I think, when we included it in the packet, we had had sixty-one respondents, we're up to sixty-five now, so you can see those responses there. So, we haven't necessarily received a lot of feedback, however, we've actually gotten some really good ideas, things that we hadn't necessarily considered previously, and some really good feedbacks, so we're incorporating as much of that as possible at this point. So, I'm gonna walk through really quickly the criteria that we've received feedback on and that are included in the recommendation this evening. The first is the population standard that we should use as we try to balance the population in all of the wards. What is that standard? Should we try to get all wards within five percent, within three percent, within some other percentage? So, that's one of the key criteria. Whether or not we should account for anticipated growth, that is, should we size wards to account for expected increases in growth or in population, or where we might expect decreases? So, we've received feedback on that. Also, should, how should we consider the process in general? Should we consider kind of starting from scratch regarding wards, or should we try to work with our existing boundaries? So, also have feedback and a recommendation on that. How should we consider the location of incumbents, whether it be city council or eWeb commissioners? And then, kind of a host of other components that we've gotten some feedback on. How should we consider neighborhood boundaries? So, if we're looking at adjusting a particular ward boundary, should we look at where the neighborhood boundary is to help perhaps guide where that line should be? How should we look at similar interests, primarily different demographic factors? How should that play in? Comments and feedback we've received on how to incorporate geography into that, whether it be major roads or rivers, so how should that factor in? We received some really interesting feedback on where wards come together, in particular as it relates to different city projects. Take, for example, a street assessment project, where you have multiple wards coming together, and you've got a project that perhaps spans those three wards or more, and so, that was some good feedback and something, you know, to potentially consider. Another one that's come up is to consider school attendance areas, for example, elementary school boundaries. Again, if we're looking at potentially moving a line here or there, maybe consider if it would line up with school attendance boundaries, if that would help to bring different communities of interest together. And so, those were kind of the key criteria that we've received feedback on. Again, the results of those surveys and what we've received are in the packet, and we'll walk through the recommendation here at the end of our presentation.
One of the things we are trying to do is make data available on request. Data is just familiar to work with now than it has been in the past, and so, on a, by request basis, we'll provide the same data that we're using on a census block basis to folks in the community, and so, we're making that available. And additionally, we are, as, upon your direction on criteria, as we develop scenarios on your behalf, we can try to make those available on the web as well with population information, so people feel as though it's as transparent a process as possible. About timing, what we've previously shared with you is our expectation, unless you provide different direction tonight, is that after we hear from you on the criteria, we would return in late July with two or more scenarios that attempt to show different ways to meet your criteria, and then, after that July session, we could then go get public input and return to you in September so that you can start to narrow that down. The one question in addition to the criteria that we'd like to receive an answer from you on, if we develop two or more scenarios, would you like to see those before we put those in front of the public? So, if we start to develop scenarios in July, do you want to see them before we post them? And so, it'll be helpful to know that in terms of how we structure public involvement.
So, the recommendation from the city manager is in your packet. Just quickly walk through that. Putting forward that the population range that be used be to have the wards be within three percent of each other from a population standpoint, working with our current census data and not assuming where or how much potential growth may occur, developing scenarios that don't consider protecting incumbent elected officials, also utilizing a lot of those other considerations I mentioned, trying to look at geographic neighborhood features, trying to keep wards as compact and contiguous as possible. And then, finally, as we develop scenarios, providing demographic information associated with that, so that we're able to see the impacts that that may have, and other things you might want to consider as you go forward. These criteria that are put forward in the recommendation are consistent with the results we received in the survey, and for the most part, consistent with what we've heard in the larger community as we've spoken with other stakeholder groups.
Great. Okay. So, I did want to point out, Jason, that I think under the, a recommendation over criteria for incumbent elected officials, it was not only that you wouldn't protect them, but you wouldn't use it to redistrict anybody out either.
Correct, both ways.
Both ways, right.
No harm.
Speaking of someone of the better...
Right, right. Okay, so, I have Alan first, and George Pollan, and then Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, Kelly, there's two meetings scheduled for ward redistricting in July.
That's correct.
One on the eleventh and one on the twenty-fifth, so, was there...
The meeting on the eleventh is a placeholder and may not be needed if you are able to provide direction on criteria tonight.
Okay, so, the scenarios might come back to us on the twenty-fifth meeting?
Correct.
Okay. The second question or comment I had was the one the mayor just made, which is, the way this is written on the third bullet on the recommendation, develop scenarios without consideration of protecting incumbent elected officials, is not a neutral statement that the mayor just said. And the flip side to protecting incumbent officials is creating disruption, and it's not only us, there are other entities that are, get elected officials, in particular eWeb, and is there anybody else that uses our voice system?
Just those two.
Just those two. And so, I think what we need here is tweaking of the system as opposed to wholesale changing of it. To me, that also means, don't lock the vote in terms of where people elected, but it's also, or currently elected, so creating more work than we need to by redistricting somebody out of their district also becomes a political tool. So, it's just the opposite of what people thought it might do. It might actually be the other way around if we don't say this correctly. I'm in favor of a more neutral statement. This doesn't quite work for me. I don't know what the language would be, maybe we could craft something as we go. But as to the other, I like the three, three percent plus or minus. I don't think we should assume potential growth, because that'll be an endless quagmire that we'll never get out of. I do think we should take into consideration geographic and neighborhood features. I think we should strive to not split neighborhood groups up in terms of what the representation is. It's difficult enough to get to all of our groups without having double councillors at different meetings. I realize that's, on, in the North Side, that's gonna be difficult unless Cal Young gets broken up into different groups, which I understand may happen, but, and I, I don't think it needs to be rigid, but, you know, the way that we've done it here, it's kind of, they're geographically constrained, and I think demographic information is also important in keeping groups together that have potentially live in a particular area because they like living there because they affiliate, and that should follow through in how we do our wards as well. So, I like everything that you guys have put forward as the recommendation, except for the wording of that third bullet. I'll work on that.
Okay, good. George Pollan, you're next.
Well, I think so far, looking at the demographics chart, it's fairly close in all the different categories, and then, different wards also, so I'm okay with that. And I agree with Alan, we don't need to do a major wholesale change, just a tweaking of the system. And I guess, I was the recipient of the fortune of redistricting an incumbent out of his position, because when I ran for city council, I did not have a councillor living in my ward representing Ward Four, because the redistricting that took place in 2000, Gary Reer and Bonnie Bettman ended up living in the same ward, and Gary fortunately said he was not going to seek reelection, so he volunteered to represent what is now Ward Four at the time. So, you know, I'm not in favor of doing this without consideration of protecting incumbents, because it is, it's gonna cause a lot of confusion on some people's parts. And I'm not so sure about the school attendance boundaries, because you have a lot of families in this community that, given the opportunity, will send their kids to other schools within the four J or the Bethel School District. So, the geographic and neighborhood association is a good idea. I like looking at that a little bit more. And the timing piece, I think it is utmost of importance that we have this done in time for people to file for the next election, either city or eWeb election. This has to be done by then.
Thanks, George. Andrew, you're next.
Well, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been said so far. In looking at the demographics, what it shows are races, which is good, and age, but, you know, there's always a socioeconomic status that people are concerned about, and I just want to make sure, not that, not that it would be done purposefully, but that we make sure that the neighborhoods that have the lower S-E-S don't get broken up, so that they have representation that represents all of them. So, however you want to, however you want to say that. And I agree that we shouldn't, I agree with mostly of what was said, so I'll just stop at that.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. I agree with a lot of what the other councillors have said so far. On page seventeen, this was the attachment B, public feedback. Number two is, addresses the question of whether to try to predict what, which wards are gonna grow and which ones are gonna remain stagnant. That would be, I agree, that would really be hard, but I'm just wondering if, do we have information, how the population of the wards changed in, say, like, two census previous? For instance, nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety, and nineteen ninety to two thousand? Two thousand to two thousand ten? Do they even save that info?
If that were important, I think we could do some research and try to surface it. I can't guarantee we could provide it all. We did provide information on page ten that just shows from two thousand to two thousand ten, so, only goes back ten years. We'd have to do a little research to go back further, so that's important.
Yeah, it may not be, excuse me, Kelly, it may not be worth the time to do that research. My only, my only question, my only reason I ask that was because, you know, there may be a trend of, say, Ward Six and Ward Eight growing faster, because there's more room to expand out there, and maybe Wards Four and Five expanding north and east. Maybe we would see a trend and could make a modest adjustment for predicting the growth, just very modest, or maybe not, I don't know. But that was, if we had information and it's easily retrievable, I would appreciate seeing it, but I don't expect you to spend...
Okay. Well, we'll see if it's easy.
Three hours on it or anything.
Okay. Mike, you're next, and then Pat.
I do believe some of that information is easy to get. I agree with a lot of what's been said at the table. I agree with Alan and a lot of what he said. I suppose, I would be willing to accept the manager's recommendations, except for, as has been noted, point number three. I suppose I would suggest with that, develop scenarios without consideration of incumbents.
It's hard to...
I'm not exactly how to parse that.
I was gonna say...
I guess what I would say is, is that you wouldn't want to particularly, as you mentioned, either protect or try to exclude, and I guess I would move the language more around the idea of to not exclude unless mathematically and geographically unavoidable.
That's...
That's tortured.
It is, and that's my problem.
I was suggesting...
It is, tortured is all get out, and I don't know how to solve that, but I, are you, I don't, perhaps we could get a recommendation that meets legal criteria from Glenn here, he's good with the language. That would be a way for us to thread that needle between, we don't want to do either, we want minor tweaks, but we want, we want to comply with the law in this case, but I think everybody's expressing the same intent.
The easiest way to do that is to delete it.
Yeah.
We've heard what you've said, that was our intention all along.
Well, I hope the maker of the motion decides to delete that particular line from the manager's recommendation, get there. I would also say that I'm absolutely in agreement with the tweaking idea, because I've seen several different kind of ideas here about how to tweak here and there that I think don't make any major changes and get us to zero variance pretty quick.
Absolutely. Just following up on the repeated comments here, I would, there's a reasonableness issue here, and I think that's just a, that's kind of the language that I would be searching for, is you wouldn't want people gerrymandering to either get someone out or keep somebody in, but if there's a reasonableness about trying to not unnecessarily exclude an existing person, then that, that seems to make sense to me, sort of a standard of reason, I guess, as opposed to an intention to do something political with it. That's the only thing I would say.
That is our intent.
Okay. Pat, you're next, and then Betty.
Thanks. Heaven forbid we have, heaven forbid we have the same kind of scenario that we had in the state redistricting in two thousand ten, or two thousand, excuse me.
We're gonna have to agree this time, though.
Somehow.
The, you know, I, looking at the points that you, the outline here, it goes pretty much with the discussion that I had with you guys earlier, so evidently, everybody said the same thing, so I'll say it again at the table. There's only one word that I would change, and that is the word "not" in the third bullet point. I think, looking at potential growth, it's not a mystery where available land is, residential land inside the urban growth boundary. The only mystery is what's going to happen after envision Eugene and after we do make the changes there, but trying to predict as well as we can where the growth is going to happen avoids a situation that we have in Ward Five and Ward Six right now, where the people living there are vastly underrepresented as far as, as far as the council.
We can.
We do what we can.
Numerically.
And all, you know, all of the neighborhood groups that I'm, that are in my ward, oh, wait, hold on.
Oh, of the neighborhood groups?
But, so, I think, I'm glad everybody agrees with me on this, that it all looks pretty good.
Betty?
But, just finally, the, assuming potential growth, I would prefer that we did look at potential growth, and where it may not be the final decision, but at least aware of where we think the growth is going to happen, and based upon where the available residential land is inside the existing urban growth boundary. Thanks.
All right, now Betty.
I like the criteria that you have developed, and I think it makes sense. Last time, we had similar criteria, I think, but we didn't follow it. I know, after last redistricting, I ended up representing a huge number of people who had not voted for me, because they hadn't been in my ward, and as has already been pointed out, two councillors ended up in the same ward, which was, that's just because they lived near each other, I guess, but I don't think we should consider protecting or punishing anyone, but on the other hand, we should, it shouldn't be a consideration, actually. And I say that as a person who lives right in the center, so you couldn't possibly redistrict me out, but...
Creating...
Out of, well, you could change it a lot, but I don't think we should consider what's possible growth, we don't know. We, I think, keeping within three percent is a good idea, and obviously... And obviously, some things have to change and should change as little as possible.
All right. Alan?
There was also, an interesting outcome of this was that Ward Three actually had one of the highest rates of growth. I think that's because it became more dense, not because a bunch of housing went in there. I think there's a lot more density in there and it relates to younger people and students. Unfortunately, their percentage of them that vote is actually pretty disturbingly low. I wish it were a lot higher, but it's not. And so what ends up happening, even though Ward Three has a lot of people in it, it doesn't have as many voters on a regular basis, especially when it comes to city issues. They, you know, they go out and they vote for president and that's about it. Other than that, a lot of them don't take the side of vote. I guess I, I agree with what you said, Betty, that it shouldn't take any consideration whether or not you're redistricting them out or protecting them, but this doesn't say that. This only says, without consideration of protecting incumbents. I was, I'm a little...
It says it though on here, it's got both. It doesn't...
Well, then...
What's the under incumbent? It says staff receive advice to develop scenarios that neither protect incumbents nor specifically target current officials to redistrict them out.
Can we change it to that? Because this only is half that. And so...
Just leave it out?
Because I tried to figure out how to do it and, you know, I agree with Glenn that the best way to deal with it right now is just to delete it. And the understanding is clear from all of us that we neither want to protect nor punish as Counselor Taylor said.
I think we got it.
I think if we deleted it, would be, from the motion, that would be a good, that'd be easier.
So that when you, Betty puts a motion on the table, it will say, accept the manager's recommended criteria, except for bullet three.
Three.
Okay.
Want to do that?
I'll do that. I move to accept the city manager's recommend, recommended criteria for developing ward scenario options with the exception of bullet number three.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Four, five, six, seven, eight, and when opposition is none, it passes. So we, thank you. Yes, you have more, Kelly?
So just want to return to the question I raised earlier. We would expect to return at the end of July with two or more scenarios and wanted to just get some sense about your comfort level as we develop scenarios, if you would prefer that we preview those with you before we start to release those to the public.
Yes.
So...
Is that a yes or no from everybody?
Yes, non.
Yes, non.
Okay. Okay, thanks, that's helpful.
You have one more comment?
Yeah, seeing that Ward Three is, holds the University of Oregon and having it be black and orange seems not only wrong, but insulting.
Fix that up. Thank you both.
I don't want to have to make a motion.
Before we end the meeting tonight, because we have some time, if there are other issues, we'll go back to the items of, items in committee reports. If anybody has anything they want to talk about in terms of what's happening in their area, now we have some time and we can do it.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm glad Andrea did step up and mention Wayne Watkins because I was going to mention it. He does have a celebration going on tonight prior to the board meeting, which I'd hope to attend. We spoke about it at the last city council meeting, we actually mentioned Wayne. And Wayne has done just a yeoman's work since before I was on the school board. And he is a, is going to be sorely missed. But like all great ex-officials, I don't think he'll disappear. I think we'll still hear from him, so. Thank you very much, Wayne Watkins.
I guess I should add to that then, since I'm attending George Russell's retirement party this coming weekend, that I should mention George Russell, who served 4J as a school superintendent for quite a long period also, and speak of an appreciation of the contributions he's made to 4J and our community, so. I want to do that. Sorry, sorry.
You can get paid far less.
No, no, not necessary, not necessary. George?
This must be the time of year a lot of people retire. There's a retirement for Mark Pangborn from EPD coming up. Also, EPD has Captain Swenson and Lieutenant Mike Gilbert retiring at the end of this month also, so congratulations to both of you.
Kudos, please don't clap on the others.
And then, real quickly, Maxine Walton was our chair for this past year for Travel Lane County, and she has, her term has expired and Richard Goyles is now our new chair of Travel Lane County. Two things for them is the annual photo contest has begun. Head out and capture the best of the region. There's different categories you can get into. You can call Travel Lane County or get on the website for more information. And also, they sponsor a family day periodically at Travel Lane County at the Adventure Center Gateway. So that information will also be posted on, on their website. Last Saturday, yeah, last Saturday, they had learning about sandboarding, rafting, camping, hiking, and summer fun, and beach safety, and things of that nature. So people who are interested in traveling here in Lane County, get on the website for Travel Lane County, there's all kinds of information for it.
Thank you, George. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was in Texas this last week at an Aleo conference, it was, it's the biggest gathering of Latino elected officials. And we had quite a few heavy hitters. We had Governor Perry speak to us. We had Department Secretary of the Interior, Mr. Cisneros. And so it was a very, very good conference. It was a women's empowerment, so got to talk a lot about, you know, the things that we do for ourselves to be empowered, about immigration issues, around education and the gap for Latino students. So that was very, I really enjoyed it. I did do some other things this last month. I was able to speak to groups of families that were coming to the University of Oregon to kind of like get to know the UVO. These people, these, these families were from rural parts of the community, so I was one of the speakers there. Pat and I tabled at the We Are Bethel Celebration. That was a lot of fun. A lot of our neighbors were there, got to visit with a lot of people. I went to the PSCC meeting that we had last Monday. Excuse me. The main issue on the table was the budget, of course, and sponsors had been cut by 250,000. And my understanding, I got a phone call from Paul Solomon, the new director, that the county was able to restate 100,000, so I was really glad to hear that. I also, this weekend, while I was in Texas, Train Song had their, celebrate Train Song. And I'm sorry, folks, I wasn't there, moved the date on me since the last meeting. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you got anything?
George and I are continuing to meet with the Cal Young Neighborhood Association. Folks, we're looking at the opportunity to split that into four or five new neighborhood associations because it's so large and there's work that's ongoing in that regard. And we have a police commission report someday soon, I would think, but not today, apparently. One of the things that we, that we had in police commission recently, I know, as I think I mentioned before, the manager's asked if we could bring to a full council work session, so we'll be doing that at some point in the future as well, so that everyone can see the presentation that the mayor and I saw at police commission. I think that's all at this time. Thanks, Mayor.
Chris, you got anything?
Oh, just quickly, the Housing Policy Board is going to be meeting this Wednesday evening to review the applications for the next affordable housing project. There are two applications for construction and one for a renovation. I think they'll be reviewing that.
Great. George?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have any committee meetings this last week, last two weeks. I did, however, about 10 days ago, attend the cleanup session at Civic Stadium. It was really great, about 20 people showed up. It was all business. I mean, we had some fun, but it was, people just went right to work and cleared off all the blackberries. A few more sessions like that and it would really look pretty nice again, at least the field, the grounds. The building itself, of course, needs a lot of work. It's kind of interesting to examine some of the problem areas, but it's all doable. It's not, it's nothing insurmountable. We cleared home plate and the pitcher's mound and threw out a, fashioned a home plate with an old T-shirt that we found and threw out a ceremonial pitch with an old ball found in the weeds as we were weeding, so. We filled up a whole truck. The school district had a, had a dump truck there, so we filled it up with brush overflowing. So we're going to try to use power tools next time, get permission from the district. We could get a lot more done with power. This was all done with hand tools. We would buy our own insurance policy and have people sign waivers. That's the idea. I don't know if they'll approve that or not. I hope they do. It'd make the work go a lot faster, so.
Thanks, George. Betty, you had more you wanted to add?
I just need to announce that the Workforce Partnership will be giving their annual awards at August 25th lunch at the Valley River Center. And I think Margaret will make reservations for anyone who wants to go.
Alan, you got anything?
Yeah, attended the Sustainability Commission meeting. And we're also doing the annual retreat to create our work plan and taking to heart some of the conversations that we've had here and with the Human Rights Commission about how information can flow up and down from our commissions or stand commissions is a part of the discussion. And that's actually a two-part weekend retreat. We did the first part and then, which is reviewing what we did, and the next one is coming up on a Saturday to work on the work plan. And I think that's about it.
So, yeah?
I just had the approach of being in Santa Cruz Thursday and Friday doing my professional life, doing workshop with them. And it was interesting enough that the mayor of Santa Cruz did the first State of the City address. Actually, it wasn't an address, it was a State of the City newsletter. They don't actually have a ceremony and things like that, they just sent out a newsletter. And in it were, just to show you, every community I go to has the same exact issues. They were talking about economic development, parking, and roads.
Just so we're not alone.
We are not alone. Everybody talks about the same thing and the financial crunch that they're...
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing regarding the Human Rights Commission, I'd like to just take a moment to express publicly my thanks to Raquel Wells, who is doing an outstanding job of working with the Human Rights Commission. She just is really, I'd like to congratulate you as her manager, but generally speaking, she just really holds that commission together nicely. And I want to thank her publicly for the work that she does.
Thanks, Pat. I'll just mention a couple of things. You all know that on, between July 10th and the 13th, we're having a visit from our sister city, the mayor and councillors and other folks, and the mayor's wife. July 10th through the 13th, there's a couple of events you've been invited to. And I have sent you all an urging that it would be really, really, really nice if you could all spend some time with them. They really treat us well when we go there and we'd like to make them feel really honored and welcome coming to our community. It's 50-year friendship, this is not a small, not a small 50 years.
Wow.
Not a small deal at all. I actually went and spoke to E-PAL, which is the Eugene Police Department Assistance League Summer Camp. They had about 100 kids there, each broken up into groups, each with a police officer as their chief councillor and...
Camp leader.
Huh?
Camp leader.
Yeah, camp leader. And just, they were having a wonderful time and really appreciate that that is provided for kids in our community. And we had the kickoff of Summer in the City, although I would say it wasn't terribly summery on the kickoff evening for Summer, Summer in the City, but there were a lot of folks and a lot of music and, and just looking a year ahead to the Olympic Track and Field Trials, and we had people come from that, Minlanana and others, and it was just a really nice town and gown kind of beginning to our Summer in the City program, which we hope everybody will come every Wednesday and participate in. So, city manager?
Nothing, ma'am.
Okay, yes.
Just a couple of things real quick. Friday, June 10th, I attended the Metro Class 14 recruit graduation for the Eugene Springfield Fire Personnel. Two interesting things. One of the recruits that graduated, and I'm sorry, I can't remember, I believe it was Jesse Bishop. His father is currently working for the Fire Department and his grandfather has retired from Eugene Fire Department also. I hope I got that name right. And another one, another one of the recruits, Ryan Charbonneau, his, his father's Sergeant Rich Charbonneau from Springfield Police Department. I bumped into Rich at the ceremony, he says, I think I trained my son right, he became a firefighter. And one other thing, Mayor, we have seven action items tonight, four of which are time sensitive. Could we take care of the consent calendar at this meeting?
If you all consent to doing it, we could do it. So you want to put the consent calendar motion out to Council President?
Have we gabbled out? We have not.
Not, we have not.
Okay. I move to approve the items of the consent calendar.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Alan?
I'd like to just pull items C and D, not because I have a problem with them, just because I think they're meritorious and be talked about a little bit, so we had some time.
So you're gonna, are you going to talk about them at this meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
Just right here.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the consent calendar except for C and D. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. So let's go to C. Alan?
This one is adoption of resolution for approving low-income rental housing property tax exemption, and it's an affordable housing project. And I thought it was, it's the Willackenzie project, right? Willackenzie Crossing Project on Willackenzie Road. And I just thought it was a particularly good project when I was reading about it, and I think it's something that we should celebrate instead of kind of just doing it in this consent agenda. So I just wanted to pull it out for folks' approval.
Okay. I'm sure George, I bet you George appreciates that.
No, I think you...
Okay, so then let's go on to, we have to vote on that one. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. Let's go on to D.
And I wanted to pull this one out because I think it's a Hallmark thing, actually. It's a transfer of the Qualified Energy Conservation Bonds for the LCC building that's going to fill the old library pit.
One more step, huh?
So it's one little step closer to the reality of getting that pit filled and that project going and helping downtown get more eyes on the street and more people down there. So I think that is a great little, little milestone, but yet something to celebrate.
I thought that pit was pretty big, actually.
It actually is, it actually is.
It was a really big pit, which no longer is.
And it's actually filled.
It's filled, in fact, both pits are filled now.
There are no more pits in our downtown. We should celebrate that.
That's right.
It takes its base grave and it's less filled.
So, something like pit to fill, or, no, never mind. Okay, please, all those in favor of D, please indicate.
Yeah, we're taking to make sure it's topics.
None in opposition, it passes. And with that, we've passed the whole consent calendar and we'll meet over for our regular meeting at 7:30.